As you all get back to your seats.
Yeah, it was clever.
And get back to yourselves. Thank you, Ms. Evans.
Yes, I'm here. I'm here. I'm paying attention.
As you know that we are about an hour behind the schedule. And I am absolutely committed to end this work session by 6:45.
6:45?
6:45. That's absolutely maximum. Maximum. And we have three topics. We have three topics to discuss. And I'm gonna do it in reverse order. The first one we'll do is recommendation on hiring process for Audit General. And then we'll talk about term of Audit Committee members. And then adding committee members to Audit Committee. With the decision made by this board to hire a Audit General, now we have to decide upon hiring process. So time is of essence to make some decisions on that one. So we'll do that. If he could open up the attachment posted on the bull dot, that's basically recommendation from the Audit Committee. It's not complete, as you can see, but that's the recommendation from the Audit Committee. And whatever is lacking will have to be decided, you know, by the School Board, entire Board. I was sort of hoping that we have some staff member, but not. Kathleen is not here?
No, Kathleen.
Kathleen is not here? Okay, Kathleen is not here. So we're gonna do without Kathleen. So you can all read the recommendations from the Audit Committee. That the position will be, position will, hello? Position will run as open until field. Our advertisement will start from, recommended to start from November 13th. These are all recommendations. And there are, you know, list of the places where it is being recommended to be posted. And I have, in addition to that list, I have received from a committee member, a one auditioner place for us to advertise, which is the Council of Inspector General for Integrity and Efficiency. I'm not too familiar with that place, but it is being highly recommended by very highly respected committee member, none other than Dr. Charlie Dane, sitting there. So just keep that in your mind. And then, it is recommend, it is being recommended that we divide the selection process into two phases. And I could easily see that this going into three phases, but the first was regimen screening phase, and then interviewing phase. And then the whole Board to be divided into two groups of the individual Board members' choice. You can join either a regimen screening committee or interview committee, but not both. You pick one. That's the recommendation from the Audit Committee. And the Board members who sign up, nobody's forcing anybody, anyone to sign up for any of the committee. Once you sign up, you're committee to do all of that subcommittee's work. Meaning that you cannot just come to partial interviewing of the applicants and try to participate that particular committee's deliberation. You have, you need to be committee to, fully committee to entire subcommittee's work. That's the recommendation. So far towards, that is the, basically, the recommendations from the Audit Committee. So I am gonna take some comments or questions from Board member. Yes, Dr. Garza?
I just wanted to be clear with the Board. I don't, I don't believe Dr. Crenshaw was, had scheduled to be here tonight. So I just didn't want you to think that she just didn't show up. She had, her husband's out of town, she has little ones to take care of. I'm sure she would've made other arrangements if she'd known you wanted her here. But we have Dr. Pajardo here. So I know we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, we have a Dr. Pajaro. I didn't, I didn't see her. So if, you know, Dr. Pajaro, if he could join at the head of the table.
I just didn't want you all to think that Dr. Crenshaw. And then I believe that Teresa was gonna suggest just one little minor change up to the top part of the groups that would be advertised. Virginia Society of Certified Auditors, they don't exist. So it's Virginia Society of Certified Public Accountants.
Of Public Accountants.
Is that right?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Virginia Society of Certified Public Accountants. Okay? Certified Public Accounts. Public Accountants. Okay, so I will take questions or comments. Yes.
So Mr. Moon, I'm concerned. When this Board hired Dr. Garza, and when this Board also hired Chris Horton, the process was that any and all Board members who were interested in the hiring process could participate. And we reviewed the resumes, and then we met with the candidates, and then brought a recommendation to the full Board. So my first question is, why is it saying you can be part of the screening committee or the interview committee, when the full Board was able to participate in hiring our auditor, senior audit manager? I mean, we, the prior Audit Committee, when we made that decision, thought it was very important that as many Board members as wanted to hire such an insignificant position that reports to the full Board should be able to participate. It's my understanding Mr. Stork wasn't there, so this is something that you and Ms. Strauss decided as the Audit Committee?
No, actually, there were three, three members, three of us. Because Audit Committee have four members right now.
So...
There was a unanimous decision, actually, based on the recommendation from the Kathleen Crenshaw.
Okay, but...
Okay, so, you know, Dr. Pajaro, if he could...
I really, I actually, Mr. Moon, I appreciate, but I'd actually like to hear from the three Audit Committee members on why it's an "or," because we don't have to have...
I took recommendation from the...
I understand it's a recommendation, but if what you're telling me is it's because Ms. Crenshaw recommended it, it sounds like she wasn't aware that this Board had already done two hirings with Mr. Horton and with Dr. Garza.
I think she's very, she's very familiar with what we did with the both, Dr. Garza's hiring and the Audit General.
So why would we have more opportunity to participate?
Okay, so I am going to, I am...
Why would we have more opportunity to participate in hiring our senior audit manager versus our Audit General?
Mrs. McLaughlin, that's for the full Board to decide. This is only recommendation from the Audit Committee. And full Board can make whatever decision he wants to make. So we just, you know, Audit Committee honored the advice of HR staff member. So I'm gonna ask you whether, you know, Dr. Pajaro could shed light on that.
We, as Dr. Garza has certainly said, we serve at your pleasure. As we do a number of hirings across the division, we do normally ask that we have a representative sample, but that does not mean that that precludes all Board members from participating. So while it could have, it was Ms. Crenshaw's recommendation, it is not one that if she were here would stand behind or stand on the sword for that.
So in other words, while it might be recommendation based on what the division typically does, given that our Board has chosen in the past to allow any and all Board members to participate, which I do recall, it was, you had to commit to being able to, if you start on the process, you need to be there for the full thing. But I believe there was at least six of us who were involved with the hiring of the senior audit manager.
So Ms. Crenshaw, as Mr. Moon said, Ms. Crenshaw was certainly intimately working with you all in the hiring of the last position that you just referenced as well. I know that it would be our practice that if any Board members participate, it needs to be the full participation, I believe, as Mr. Moon said in his opening comments.
So with that very helpful input, I would just like to share with my colleagues, I thought we had a very positive experience when we hired for our senior audit manager. I, I think that breaking it up and making it an either/or, that actually concerns me because as someone who served on an admissions committee review, which I consider somewhat similar, similar, it's very helpful when you can see the applicants, and then you make a choice. And if you're only on the interviewing committee, you don't actually have the context of what the other resumes look like and who you're actually, actually selecting from. So I would hope we would honor the process that has been very successful for this Board when we all participated with hiring Dr. Garza, and then all of us who wanted to participate with the senior audit manager did so. And I think it was a very, you know, something that we did really good work on.
Okay, are you done, Mrs. McLaughlin? Now I have Mr. Schultz, Ms. Hines, Mr. McElvin, and Mrs. Smith. Mr. Schultz.
I was just wondering what, maybe from a different perspective, if there was a, if there's an advantage to splitting it, and if so, what that advantage was. Because I'm trying to weigh the pros and the cons of, like, why would, why be swayed one way or the other? So I can't, I can't advocate for either, because I don't know the pros of doing this. So what were the pros either, Dr. Pajardo, if you, you know, like, what?
Well, I could certainly, you know, give you some of the reference points is when we have done this in the past and have split things up. So sometimes you can review resumes, kind of fall in love with a candidate, and you're already predisposed to, kind of the angel effect, halo effect, as you will, because you've read about that person as opposed to the person coming in totally cold, you know, as well. As well as you can also form some perhaps not as good opinions, as well having reviewed the resume. So it can work to the advantage or disadvantage. One is a much cleaner, it's cold, it's, you have no other reference point. And the other is, to your point, you have a little bit more context.
If that's the context, I mean, I'm not particularly swayed, you know, largely one way or another by that. I mean, I'd have, I'd have to think about what any other benefits were, other than, the one thing I was thinking was that could be a benefit is, it'd be easier to schedule meetings, if it was a smaller group. But, but I have a feeling that anybody who's committed to doing it will commit to the meetings, and it'll work out. So I'm just trying to weigh, like, the pros and cons. The cold and clinical side of, I mean, I don't think so, that's not gonna work for me in terms of swaying me, but, you know, but potentially the, the meetings might. But I'll be interested to hear what everybody else has to say.
Are you done, Mrs. Schultz? I have Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, we did, I think that was Dr. Crenshaw's advice, too. Is that it's actually kind of how you guys do things, when you're hiring higher level staff? And so it's, it's just that, you know, I got the sentence from Dr. Crenshaw that it is sort of a best practice from her perspective, that there would be fresh eyes and no biases going in. On the question, though, also, there's another part of this, I think, which is, what is the question? Is the question that whether the most Board members as possible will participate, or that those Board members who do participate will participate, you know, to a full extent? Because I think those are two different questions. You know, it was very, very unusual when we hired Dr. Garza, where we all, we kind of hit both of those. We checked both of those boxes. We all participated, and we all participated every step of the way, right? Unless we're ready to do that, my feeling, my feeling is that we'll have more Board members able to participate in this process if we break it up. Because I just don't know that there are, you know, very many of us who would be able to commit to the whole process. So that was the other reason why I thought it was a good idea to break it up, make it more likely that people would be able to participate in one or the other part of it, so that we have as many Board members as possible participating. I was not able to participate in the hiring process for Mr. Horton, you know, because it was just, you know, for several of us, we just can't give that much time. And so that was the other reason, Elizabeth, where I felt like this was a better way to do it, because it kind of spreads the, the access and the opportunity for Board members to participate.
Done, Ms. Hines? I have Mr. McElvin and Mrs. Smith.
My question was answered.
Anybody else? I do go back. Okay, Mr. Stork.
The part I'm not clear about is, the selection, the selection committee, the final one, the interview committee, will make a recommendation, and that recommendation will be to say, this is the candidate? I'm not, can somebody help me with the last part of what the expectation was when...
That is why, at the beginning of my presentation, I said that this is sort of incomplete.
Yeah.
The last, it's a two phases, but I think there should be the last phase, or the phase, you know, selection of the, of the final candidate. But that has to be discussed by this Board. We haven't, we didn't get that far.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that was gonna be separate from this part of the discussion.
Because we didn't get that far.
Okay. So you're gonna talk about that in just a minute?
I'll do the recommendation, because Audit Committee, you know, didn't get to discuss that, so they will be, have to be discussed by this Board. And if you wanna say something about it, you can do it now.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to get at. I guess, then I'll do it in two steps. One is that I think we ought to encourage everybody possible to, to be involved with both parts of it, whether it's a resume or the interview committee. And I think more eyes on it usually gets a better outcome. I don't think it changed anything in looking at how we did the, the previous audit position. And I think it was, it made people feel better and more confident about the process. And I think that's our objective here, is that people feel that the Board truly is in control of that process, and, and the Board, everybody who wants to be involved has had a chance to be involved. Because in the end, the Board will decide, regardless of what the recommendations are of the, of the interview committee. And if, and I think this is probably the more important of the, of the two comments, was the interview committee outcome. For me, that's, that's essential, that's the most essential part of it, because we, if we're getting one recommendation to the full Board, that obviously gives you a different sense of how important that interview committee is versus the full Board maybe recommends a primary and a secondary. They have a first choice or a second choice or something. But I think the key for me is that there's, there's some kind of next level choice. And if there's not, then recognizing that that, you know, that may need to be, the interview committee maybe should be a committee of the Board. Because it is, this is, is an important position, very important position. So I think I need to understand that part of it before I would be fully confident or comfortable with the second part. But I, my advocacy, I guess, for that would be that the interview committee would be expected to maybe recommend two, or at least, at least two people, and maybe, maybe they have a primary one and a secondary one, I don't know. But, but at least there would be more than one person that would be recommended to go forward for the Board to, to meet and consider. I don't see how we do this without giving the Board a chance to engage with that person as distinct from what we oftentimes do when the superintendent is hiring somebody. We have kind of a, just a side meeting, and technically how we did the Audit General. We had just kind of a side conversation. I think this is more important than that, and, and I think it has to be more formal than what we've done in the past. And if we do that, then maybe we don't have as much of an issue with the screening and the selection committee issues. Thank you.
Okay, I have a Mr. Strauss next.
I do think, however, if we have one committee, two committees, what have you, it's clearly a two-step, certainly an initial two-step process, where we have to review resumes, decide how many we're going to interview. And I think that whoever decides to do the resume reading, I think people have to volunteer for that entire process. In other words, you can't come in and read a couple of interviews and say, gee, that was interesting. So whoever does the interview, the resume reading, you need to be in the room with whoever's doing that and do the whole thing. And with the actual in-person interviews, whether or not we, you know, whoever does that ends up with two recommendations or one final recommendation, whoever does that piece of it has to do, has to be willing to commit to the entire interview process, so that you are making your decision or recommendation in context. So, I mean, that, and if, if somebody wants to be both reading resumes and reading interviews and wants to give that amount of time, I'm not opposed to somebody wanting to do that. But whoever, whatever piece you do, you need to be willing to do the entire section that you signed up for, so.
Okay. Anybody else before I do go back? Okay. Terran Kofax.
Yes, I just want to concur with Ms. Strauss. I, I think if you're willing to commit to both parts of it, then go ahead. But I think that's the important key element, that if you, if you start, you have to finish, and you have to, you have to see, see it through. And I do think, wasn't there, if I remember, oh, no, that was for the, because I remember I opted out of one of the portions of the interview process. For, for that, when we were, you could decide which firm, if you wanted to look during the, when we were, the search firm. And I opted out of that, because I couldn't, I couldn't do that, but then when it was the interview process. So we'd have, we, there's precedence for doing it both ways. This Board has done it both ways.
Okay, anybody else before I do go back? Okay, Mrs. Reed, by the way, Mrs. Reed was also, even though she did not participate in discussion herself, she was present at the Audit Committee work session on Thursday night.
Right, I was sitting there listening, and I recall that one of the discussion points, whether it's valid or not, was raised, you know, what if there's a person who looks through the resumes and has a specific bias? You know, I want the candidate who has whatever X qualification. And then if they went to the interview, then they might bring that same bias there. And so I remember that was part of the discussion. So, you know, whether or not we believe that's, that's founded, that was one thing that was thrown out. But I also think that if we're trying to focus our time and our resources, that dividing up makes some sense. But maybe the charge of this, of the interview group would be to pick the top, you know, whatever, two or three candidates. And then maybe at that point, the whole Board interviews all of those. Because I don't know how many you'll end up interviewing. You can get a slew of resumes, you know, you may interview quite a few candidates. And so that would be my thought process, that when we come down to the finalists, that we all would have an opportunity. That's what I would like to do.
Okay, any other Board member before I do go back? Okay, then I do have a Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Mr. Schultz.
So I think, in listening to where the concerns are, first of all, when we did the senior audit manager position, if memory serves me, and somebody correct me if I'm not recollecting it accurately, the resume review process took one night. I mean, they brought them in, we looked at them, we discussed which ones we felt, you know, were the, the strongest applicants, and, you know, decided on what we thought would be a reasonable number to interview. And if I recall, we actually did two rounds of interviews, because we, we first interviewed people, and then, you know, brought them in for another, you know, second round, as they got to the finalist stage. But in terms of breaking this up for the selection versus the interview, you're talking about one, one meeting different. When you talk about professionalism and, and the fact that what we're doing as a Board, I think is different from like a superintendent or a regional superintendent who, you know, with 24,000 employees, you couldn't possibly have an LT sit there and hire everybody in that manner. But, you know, we've now hired two people that report and serve the Board, and I think it worked out really well. You know, obviously, you're picking a superintendent, we all need to be involved start to finish. I'm very respectful of the fact that some people worry about a time commitment, but if you're gonna commit to the interviewing process, you're talking about one extra meeting that would be for the resume review. So I'm not convinced that we need to, A, break these up, and B, again, having done this type of selection work before, I, I think professionally, we all know how to look at the things we think are important. We have guidance from staff that tell us, you know, what are the qualities are important for an Audit General. But I think we would do better work, just like when we selected Dr. Garza and we selected Mr. Horton, that we had the context of, here were the candidates and their resumes, and then you decide who you want to interview, and you interview them. So I'm gonna continue to say to my colleagues who were on the fence, I think we do a disservice to ourselves if we try to separate this into two things. It's one extra meeting, and I think it, it's valuable for those who want to do it, that both processes should be combined, you shouldn't separate them.
Okay, Mr. Schultz next.
My brain is a little bit like Jell-O in my head right now, so. I, I think that between what Mr. Stork and Ms. Strauss said, I was relatively convinced that I think that they're, a hybrid version of the committee's recommendation would probably be best for the whole Board. So I don't know whether it's a subset, or, you know, you commit, if you commit to both, you commit to both, but you're committing to the whole thing. But if you can only commit to part, you know, breaking it apart in two, like we did the superintendent, and Mr. Aronat Kofax reminded me, you know, that some of us committed to the superintendent's search firm search before. And it was just if you could participate deeply in that as well. So I, I understand what the committee was trying to do, but I think that a hybrid of the recommendation is probably what's best for, for the Board.
Okay, I have a Ms. Hines next.
Well, thank you all. I'm doing some more thinking about this. And I think, just want to make sure I understand, because I think I'm agreeing with you, Mrs. Schultz. So basically, we, it would, we'd break it into two parts, for those who really are not able to do the whole thing. And, but, so if anybody really wants to do the whole enchilada, they can. So then we might have a resume review committee that has some folks who go on to interview, and some folks who don't. And we have an interview committee that has some folks who didn't look at resumes and some who did. If, if, if we're not worried about that, okay.
Anybody else? If not, then, then let me make this suggestion, that based upon the conversation that I have been hearing so far, we do three phases. Interview, regimen screening, first phase, interviewing candidates, and then selection by the entire Board. Whoever wants to participate in any of those three phases, or all of those phases, can participate. But once you commit to any of the phases, you are committed to all of the work within the particular phase. Otherwise...
I just have a question.
Okay, so let me finish what I was gonna say, okay? Do that. And perhaps the regimen screening committee will recommend no more than eight candidates to be interviewed by interviewing committee. And the interviewing committee perhaps come up with maybe two, three choices for this consideration by the full Board. Full Board could decide to hold another round of interviews with the finer candidates and make, make a decision. But that would be my suggestion, okay? Mrs. Schultz, you had some questions to ask.
I just was wondering if the second and third need to be broken, but when you described it, I mean, if we wind up as many as eight candidates, then maybe it does need to be a third round that's, so...
Because I anticipate that each interview to be about an hour, about an hour. And if we have eight, it could be one whole day, or it could be two half-days, or two substantial part of days. And, and there may be a Board members who may not be able to commit to all of those. Mrs., Mr. McElvin.
So I'm kind of going where Elizabeth was going. I appreciate Patty's suggestion to have the whole Board interview the finalists, but I do worry that that's committing everyone to potentially three hours, if not more, depending on the schedule of the interviewees. So I would be fine with just leaving it at, at two groups, and having the, the second group, if they want to do a third interview for the finalists, to do that, their second interview. Without committing the...
Without, without final phase, by the second, second, you know, second phase to be anyone, anyone, second round to be anyone who wants to do it. And that, okay?
That makes more sense.
All right?
Streamline and focus, not focus, focus, right?
But on the other hand, if you, if you want to participate in the second round, it could be as many, if it is as many as eight you want to participate, you are committing to eight interviews, as opposed to the final round, which could be as little as three. Okay? But that's, that's a suggestion from Mr. McElvin. Any other comment? Because I want to make some decisions on this and move on. Mr. Aronat Kofax.
I so appreciate, Mr. McElvin, your, your, your need, because our time is so precious, so I understand it. I just do want to impress upon the Board, this is our, this is our second employee, that it will be a direct report to the Board. So you need to understand the, it, it's not hiring the superintendent, but it's, it's an important position. So my advocacy would be that the entire Board do those final, that would be my advocacy. I'm not saying we have to do that, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay, any other Board member?
I trust my colleagues.
You trust your colleagues? Okay, good, good. We all want to trust our colleagues. And when I said three phases, even the last phase, you know, you're not, nobody will be able to force you to come, if you don't want to participate, you won't come. I mean, nobody will be able to force you to vote, if you don't want to vote. I mean, nobody will be able to force you to vote if you don't want to vote. Okay, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Smith? Okay. Okay, then, let's go with my first suggestion first, to see whether there is a support for three phases. Screening, anyone who wants to participate in screening can participate, but committed to the full work of the screening. Anyone who wants to participate in second phase, maybe come up with, to come up with about three finalists. But need to be fully committed to full work of that particular phase. Final phase is maybe no more than three candidates to interview by, you know, board members. If you don't want to participate, even in that, you don't have to participate. You think I can have a, enough support for that? Okay. All right, that's easy. All right, good. Now, now here's a little more difficult task, is who should be charged with running all these meetings? All. Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. With that, this work is done. Now we'll go to next topic.
Mr. Moon, can I add, add something else?
Yes.
Just for consideration, you don't have to adopt it, but I would, I would hope you would consider doing the final interviews on a weekend, or at least an evening, so we wouldn't have to commit.
You and I have similar challenges, don't we? Okay? We will, we will probably have to work with, you know, candidates as well, depending upon where the candidates are. Okay, the next topic is term of the Audit Committee members. That, I think that recommendation, I believe that is for the Audit Committee members to have a two-year term. That was coming from the prior Audit Committee. So let me ask Mr. Stork to briefly explain to us how that particular recommendations came. No, we, we need to hear the, the recommendation first.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't have my email up that I sent everybody originally. You're talking about the community members, is that?
No, no. Term of the, term of the, term of the Audit, yeah, term of the Audit Committee members.
That, that was actually, that was pretty straightforward. We, we talked about the length of time you need to at least learn the basics of the committee's operation, in that somebody would need to have at least a year on there to be comfortable, and they would need a second year on there to really be, we think, particularly valuable. Whether that's consecutive or not, I think is less important than the fact that we ultimately feel that, that board members, this is, I think was unanimous, my recollection was that board members needed to only be on for two years. Again, I think consecutive would be better, but if you've been on before and now you're rejoining it, then that maybe isn't quite so crucial. But that was the, that was the belief that we all had, is that it's just different enough from our other committees that it had reason to, to, to be two years.
Okay, I have a Mrs. Smith.
I would support a two-year term. I don't, I think it would be messy to say, okay, you've served before and you're going to serve now. I just think going forward, you would say, when we appoint people, it'll be for a two-year term.
Mrs. McLachlan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with a two-year term. I think you still have an opportunity than in a, in a four-year school board term that hopefully people who want a chance to serve on audit would have, you know, at least an option once to do it in that timeframe. I, I thought I heard you at once say three, and that concerned me, because I thought, how on earth can you do three? So it sounds like it was clarified, so we're all good. So it's, it's, I see the merits and the value, and think to what Ms. Smith said. Ideally, just, it's two consecutive years, and then hopefully you give a chance to have other people serve.
Mrs. Schultz?
I would just advocate that it, I like the two years, but I would also advocate no more than two terms. So minimum two years, but then you don't serve any more than two terms, so that the maximum, any one member from the public serves is four years.
No, it's not just public, it's, it's the committee members. School board members, sorry, I've been on.
Oh, you're talking about, oh, no, I don't, no, I don't support that at all. I retract my support utterly and totally.
All right. Stricken from the record. All right, and Mr. McLachlan?
So this is, by no means insult the Audit Committee, but some people might view this as cruel and unusual punishment to require two years. So I can be the cheese on this one, but...
Mr. Aronak Kofax?
No, I don't think you are. I, I, I feel that way. I feel our committee structure should be the same. I don't, I, I understand audit's complexity, but so is budget, so are other, other areas. And, you know, we won your terms for this, so I don't see any reason to stray in this area.
I have a Ms. Evans?
I also think we should stick with one-year terms. If, if the chair believes there is a need for continuity, the chair can reappoint a member. And there are already too many reasons why an individual might not either be able to or might not want to serve a second time.
Anybody else? Okay, okay. Mrs., anybody else who hasn't spoken yet before I go back? Okay, then let me say on this before I do, Mrs. McLachlan, that I will just keep it, would like to keep it as one-year term. And as pointed out, a, some colleagues of mine, that if the person is willing to continue serving on and then chairman feels that they would serve us well, then the person will continue serving on. Mrs. McLachlan?
I was just going to say, I thought that, given what our colleagues had said, even though I see the value either way, I'm comfortable going with what you just stated.
Okay, let's see whether, whether we have a consensus on that one, that we're not going to accept the recommendation from the Audit Committee? Rachel, we are not going to accept the recommendation from the Audit Committee? Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Not support the recommendation, so. Okay, now we have a, number one, the first topic, adding community members to the Audit Committee. I want to hear from Mr. Stork, how the prior Audit Committee came to this recommendation.
Again, the, I don't have the memo in front of me that I sent to everybody about the Audit Committee's original recommendation, but we, we felt strongly that we needed to have two community members. We talked about the number as well as the length of service. We also looked at other boards and how they did it. Part of what we looked at, and I underline part of what we looked at, was what the Board of Supervisors was doing. But we also listened to our staff members who talked about best practices and why it's important even as part of best practices. I know we have legal advice on that that we need to consider, but in general, I would still advocate that we, and I think the Audit Committee members would still advocate that we should have community members there and we should work through the other issues that, that we need to work through to make it work.
Okay, Besides? Oh, I'm, okay, Mrs. Strauss, do you want to speak first?
Yeah, I would support having two community members on the committee. I'm not going to speak as to how they would get appointed yet, I think we have to talk about that. And I think I would support them for one-year terms, but if they wanted to opt and stay on longer and it worked out, that would be fine as well. But that's, I would support having community members. And as long as, as the agreement is that there are occasions when the school board is going to be discussing personnel issues or student issues or something like that, and obviously those are under the law, closed meeting, and the, the citizen would be a part of whatever is appropriate for public discussion.
Okay, I have a, Mrs. McLachlan, you want to speak on that one?
Yes, I just think that based on conversations I've had with community members who've served on the Board of Supervisors Audit Committee, that there really is a great value for that involvement and participation. I feel that, as Mr. Stork mentioned, we can, you know, work with council's advice on how we structure that. But I, it would be my advocacy that we do have the citizen appointees.
Mrs. Heinz to be followed by Mr. Beckup?
Yeah, I was just wondering, in the little bit of research I've done on this, it seems like school boards around the country have a lot of different ways of doing this. I mean, some of them have several community members. And it seems like for some of them, the whole committee is community members. I mean, there's just a lot of different ways to do this. So I was wondering how, if anybody on the previous Audit Committee wants to discuss how you settled on two, what the thinking was there, you know, and sort of what role you thought the citizen member would play.
Mr. Stork, you want to respond to that?
I can do it initially. We talked about balance on the committee, and we were looking at, at that point in time, four school board members, and we saw two community members as kind of being the right balance to that. And again, we, best practices, and this goes back to our staff, we're members of the National Auditing and Auditing Associations, et cetera. We really were taking some of their advice about how to structure this in a way that maximized public engagement and, and transparency about what we were doing.
Do you want to add to that, Mr.? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about with the two citizens is that they would have, each come with a different background. And so, you know, that was a key piece of, that they would bring that sort of professional skillset, but also, again, community stakeholder. And so that, to me, was very compelling, because those of us who were serving on the Audit Committee don't necessarily have that professional background and training. And so since it's, it's our board's work, it was really great to, to see that complement of, of their, their background and knowledge.
Okay, Mrs. Strauss?
I have limited knowledge of Audit Committees throughout, throughout the country, but I did want to share those that I know about. They generally only are dealing with your one constitutionally required large audit, like we do KPMG. And in some jurisdictions, that would be their large KPMG document then comes to their Audit Committee for review. The work of our committee, the work of the Board of Supervisors Committee is, goes way, way, way beyond that. So as whether or not all the other Audit Committees across the country, but I know that is a more common practice, is you're reviewing the one large, very public audit statement.
I have a Mr. Beckup to be followed by Mr. Schultz.
I just wanted to voice my support for Mrs. Strauss's first comments. One-year terms with the ability to be reappointed and an obvious understanding that there are certain topics that have to be handled in closed session without public members.
Okay. As we decided, when we discussed a term of the Audit Committee members, it's going to be one-year. Whether it's, whether we have community members or not, term will be one-year. Okay, Mr. Schultz?
So one of the major reasons in looking at GFOA standards are, that I, that I think this is important, is, are the, the composition of this board and the ability to meet the five criteria that exist within an audit, Audit Committee structure. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but the five things that says that an Audit Committee should have access to, or the financial expertise of, through both education experience and specifically relevant government sector, possess, understanding of generally accepted accounting principles and financial statements, experience in preparing and auditing financial statements, experience in applying such principles in connection with accounting, estimates, accruals and reserves, experience with internal accounting controls, and understanding of Audit Committee functions. So that's what, that's what these, what I envision to, like, you know, whether it's two or three, or I think two sounds like reasonable. I don't know how they came up with two, but two is more than one and fewer than three. Monty Python-esque. So there's no way that anyone on this board, as even a whole, and certainly not as a subset of four, could collectively represent all five of those attributes fully. And so what I'm looking for is, are the two members of the public to bring these five specific balanced qualities to inject into the Audit Committee. So I, I support them. It's funny, my previous support, which was actually for committee members, was really for two years, because I thought for members of the public, it would take them the trajectory over time. But if you want to only do one, but I, I would say that we should preface it by saying, you know, if you get to the point where you're the one, guess what? It's pretty likely, unless you screw up or can't get along, that it's likely that we'll ask you to do a second year. So under that auspices, I want to, and I want to be clear with that, and I don't see any reason why we can't write confidentiality in NDAs to, to cover any circumstance.
Okay, I have a, anybody else before I do go back? Mrs. Reed?
I support the idea of having the two citizen members, and one year is fine. And I guess my question then would be, what would be the process for soliciting resumes and selecting the individuals so that it's fair and unbiased?
We'll get to that once we see where the consensus is in adding community members. Anybody else who hasn't spoken? Okay, Mr. Stork?
I just, I just want to, I just resent the email that I had sent everybody back in July with the Audit Committee recommendations, just so you, you have the, the initial recommendations and language that we had then, and it clarifies some of the points that we've been making tonight. Thanks.
Okay, since we need to be very transparent, a communication is been sent to a board members by a board member at a meeting, so that has to be posted? Now.
Was it previously posted?
It was previously posted.
Okay, it's a posted, okay, good then, it's a posted. Okay, good then. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, let's see then whether we have, we have a consensus on adding two community members to the Audit Committee with a show of hands. Okay, this will have to be formally voted on at the regular meeting. I just wanted to see the consensus, okay? And then, now a couple of things we need to decide is whether, remembering some legal advice we receive from our division counsel, whether the board members feel that there should be some limitations on the community members, or it should be full pledged, you know, you know, committee members, just like any, the school board member, committee member. After that, we'll talk about the selection process, if we can do it by 6:30.
I would, I would recommend that those issues for which the school board is, is legally permitted to go into closed session, that those closed sessions are, should only be school board members elected. I think that, under the Code of Virginia, I think that's the appropriate way to go.
Okay, any other thought? Okay, then our Kofax?
I know we're doing more best practices than the Board of Supervisors currently holds, but their citizen members only look at efficiencies, they do not look at waste, fraud and abuse. So I think we need to keep that model in mind, because we originally started down this road using that model.
Okay, I have a Mr. Schultz and Ms. Heinz?
Well, I, I don't know that the, the notion that if the board or a part thereof goes into closed session, it precludes citizen members, because that's not how the code is set, Virginia code, and that's not what we did for the superintendent search. Not only did we have citizen members in closed sessions, we actually had students. Yes, we did. We absolutely did. They were not, they were part of confidential interview processes and had to sign non-disclosure agreements. And we had to work with students who were under the age of 18 to specifically get non-disclosure signed. So I, I don't know that that follows the practice of this board is set, and which we were able to do, I think, extremely well. And I think that the vetting process of whoever is ultimately going to be appointed on this should be sufficient that in the, whatever inevitability, and I don't think it's so much an inevitability as a potential happenstance down the road, that something may come up that requires a confidential discussion, that hopefully this board of 12 will have done its job and vetted two individuals that, that will vote on as a body of the whole, that places enough confidence that if we're going to put that person on the, those two people on the Audit Committee to begin with, that we should be able to work with, with our council to have a non-disclosure that covers whatever might potentially ever be covered from a confidentiality statement.
Okay, I have a Ms. Heinz and a Mrs. Smith. Okay, I have Ms. Hines and Mrs. Smith.
Well, my feeling is, maybe to keep it clean, my suggestion would be to just say that the citizen members have as much participation as is allowed under the law. So if there are areas where our counsel tells us that we shouldn't have, you know, community members in the room or in a conversation, then those are the only times that we exclude them from what we're doing. That would be my thought.
Mrs. Smith.
I support a setup where the citizen members don't go into closed meetings. One of the things we had talked about, as the issue came up, it would be the entire board. And during the superintendent search process, there were no closed meetings with citizen members and board members. The board members were separate. So I do not support the citizen members being in any closed meetings.
Okay, Mrs. McLaughlin.
I just have a clarifying question to what Ms. Smith raised. So when the Citizen Selection Committee went into closed session as part of the superintendent search, did they have the FCPS General Counsel providing legal advice? So that's, for me, where I'm sort of drawing a distinction, is that.
It was a personnel.
Right.
Personnel.
No, I understand that. So in terms of the Audit Committee, if we were to have two citizens participating, and we said, you cannot come into closed session, I think the concern that I was hearing is whether or not you go into closed session doesn't always mean when you're getting legal advice. So is the concern that when it would involve legal advice as opposed to just closed session discussion? Because then I, if it's just about closed session discussion, then I'm thinking about, as Ms. Schultz pointed out, we do, we have had our citizens make that commitment that they're going to close session, and they're talking about official business that relates to personnel, and therefore they're bound to not reveal and discuss that information. So, oh, Ms. Weatherman, are you going to maybe help out here?
Okay.
It is not unusual.
Come to microphone, yes.
Most audit departments that have citizen members on their Audit Committee, those citizen members have all the rights and responsibilities of the entire committee. And the reason for that is twofold. One, it gives them the opportunity to assist the Audit Committee as the risk assessment. The risk assessment takes, conversation takes part in closed session because you don't advertise your most vulnerable areas. Well, if your citizen members, who are the individuals that have the foundation of experience in audit and accounting, et cetera, if they are precluded from participating in that, then you are not using them to the best of your ability. On that same side, they have to sign confidentiality agreements. This is typical throughout the industry and school divisions across the board. It's not typical when you get to a for-profit entity because that's a totally different setup when it comes to Audit Committees. But for government entities that have citizen members, those members have all the rights and responsibilities so that the board can utilize their skills and leverage their skills to the best of their ability.
So I would just say, Ms. Weatherman, thank you. You really helped clarify that for me, so to my colleagues. I do think that it's very important that they have all the full rights and responsibilities because when you do go into closed session, the whole point of them being there is to help advise the board and provide that objective, independent insight of their industry knowledge. So I hope we go that direction.
Okay, any other board member who hasn't spoken yet before I go back? Okay, then I have Mrs. Strauss.
It's not often that the Audit Committee goes into closed session. And the other piece that I remain uncomfortable is if there is criminal activity. Usually that is a closed session for the entire board. And the Audit Committee does not handle that. I would be, because that would be one piece of closed that I would not, I would not want a private citizen in. No, it usually wouldn't, but if there is criminal activity, sometimes it is uncovered by the school system's audit staff. But I would presume that that particular activity then would come in closed meeting with the superintendent and whatever, you know, so.
Okay, did you want to say something, Taffelozza?
Just to clarify, because I was kind of involved in the process, I'm not certain that technically the citizen and parent, the students that were involved were technically in closed session when they interviewed candidates because no member of the board was present at that time. But I do understand they had probably signed confidentiality agreements. But I'm not sure that technically that was closed session. So I just wanted to be.
I would say they were technically in closed session. I mean, I got to go back and read the statute again, but it's a committee, era committee, appointed by the school board, working on behalf of the school board, and they can go into closed meeting. I think they went into closed meeting on a personnel matter. To, you know, that would be, without reading the statute again, that would be my, you know, if I were to write an essay right now, essay answer, that would be my answer. Okay, okay, Mr. McLaughlin.
Then I don't know if it would be helpful for us to either create an exclusion list or negative list just to say that, other than personnel issues, they would be involved in the full extent of the Audit Committee work.
Okay. Anybody else before I do? Ms. Hines, and then Mr. Stork and Mrs. Smith. Okay, Ms. Hines.
I think, I don't know. I think there might be a risk in saying we carve out everything that might have anything to do with personnel because there's the audit part of it, you know, but then if we uncover something, then there's kind of the consequences in what we do as a board. So I'm just saying, if, whenever we do an audit, we're probably looking at what people in the school system are doing, you know, what employees are doing. So I just want to be careful that we don't carve out anything that has to do with, you know, people doing their jobs because that's, to me, it only becomes an issue when we think that someone's done something criminal, where we have to have a sort of a personnel response that's separate from the audit. And that, to me, maybe is where we should draw the line and not allow community members in.
Potential criminal activity.
Okay, I have Mr. Stork, to be followed by Mrs. Smith.
I think Ms. Hines captured it. I think, rather than dig in the weeds on this, I think we should just state that we want the community members part of every session except where it's prohibited by law or otherwise restricted in some way. And the board can decide that at the time if it's appropriate. Otherwise, you know, we can just abide by what our legal counsel. Because I think it's, if we try to capture it now, I think we'll just limit ourselves, rather than leaving it open and maximize the transparency with the community as well as with the members that are from the community.
I, just as a response, now, I'm not saying that I disagreed with what you just said, but I somehow see some challenges or problems in crafting language to fit our needs. But that aside, Mrs. Smith next.
All right. I kind of, I like where Ryan was going and what Dan said, but my recommendation would be, we can't craft that language here. I think we need to get, I don't think we need to make the final decision today. I mean, if there's agreement that we need to have some protective words there, then we get that advice and then make that decision.
Okay, anybody else? Then would you allow the Audit Committee Chair to confer with the Division Counsel to craft some language? Because we need to vote on this, publish as a new business, and then vote at the following meeting, that come up with some language with the advice from the Division Counsel, which is subject amendment by the board members at the board table? Yes, Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Moon, I would agree with that. I might make the suggestion that you consult with the school board's legal counsel.
I can do that, with the chair's permission because chair has the authority to allow or not allow.
That's what I thought you were referring to, but yes, it has to be our Hunter and Williams firm.
Okay. Then we'll confer with Hunter and Williams, if the chair allows. So would that be acceptable for the chair to confer, Chairman of the Audit Committee to confer with Hunter and Williams and craft a language and publish as a new business at the next meeting and to be voted at the following meeting? I don't have the language yet. It's, community members, you know, duties and responsibilities, basically, the scope of their participation, something to that effect. Okay, so I will see enough hands to go up? Oh, wow, with that, this work session is adjourned. Thank you.